I three words.
You just.
I want.
There you go. They're on TV.
Soon.
Gotta be famous, Richard.
You don't want it for anything, are you?
No.
Is Travis recording?
That's gonna make a dull meeting, you don't want it for anything.
I haven't seen.
Oh.
Anything.
Uh.
That's why I'm here.
We'll be logged as well.
Well, according to Lucy, we've been sent an email.
This has been going on for months.
Hours late.
For months.
You remember where you was setting it?
Yeah.
Wow.
I know.
That's.
It's blown out.
That's.
It's like fifty years later.
Yes.
Is that what you just said?
Yeah.
Yes.
So then, and if somebody modifies it, I can track it.
There you go.
So it's a very common thing. Besides, when I open the minutes here, they look all weird.
Yeah, good point.
Okay, so let's go to the agenda. How many emails we get? So we've, we're gonna start with A N R for Gail Sledzinski.
Sledzinski.
Sledzinski. And Mary Jane Adam, five, two, and sixty-four Chapel Street. So what do we have?
Right here on the table.
Okay, let's check it out.
Has everybody seen this?
Nope.
No.
Digitally.
The digital version, but yeah, it's small.
This is digital.
Yeah.
Well, this is basically. Let everybody see it.
But what are you looking at doing, sir?
Do you have the PDF?
Just describe what you probably.
Okay, what it is is, uh, uh, Gail, Mary Jane, living at sixty-four.
Sir, can you? Sir. Sir, can you do us a favor? Just step back a little bit, because all the camera is showing is your glasses. If you step back, the camera could see you a little better.
Do you wanna take a look at this?
Hi, my name is Richard Cook, our old cook surveyors, and I'm doing the work for Gail and Mary Jane. And what it is, is they own two properties on Chapel Street, fifty, fifty-two and sixty-four. And they're gonna move into one floor, uh, which is a residence on, that's fifty-two. And then sixty-four is two-story. And they just wanted to restructure the property line to kinda make the lots equal. You take a look at it right there, that's what they decided to do. And, and, uh, that's what it's showing on the plan.
Okay.
So the old property line, if you, if you take a closer look at it, it's, it's shown in here as foreign property line. All right, so that, that was the, the line for fifty-two. And then what we did is we, where they, I'll let them pick where they wanted to put it. And we put it over there about the seven and a half or the seventeen feet, and put that line down there. And then that's the new line between the properties. And the other parcels, the dashed lines that you're seeing are, uh, I got two of them. Well, so the, what it is is that those are the two parcel lines between the different deeds that are there. The original deed for fifty-two and the original deed for sixty-four. I know it looks confusing, but it really, I, I probably got a little carried away with it, but I thought it explained it better.
Okay.
So what we have here is, uh, this is the new.
The new, new property, yeah.
The new line. And then this is the original parcel line between sixty-four.
Okay, and this is the old property line.
Right. There you go, you got it.
Yeah, true.
But what's current now is what you're calling former property line.
Correct.
That's what is, is, is in existence now.
Yes.
Right.
The difficulty in showing this is that it was a, an older piece of land that they bought. And then they, when they had the house built on fifty-two, they took, they didn't use all the land that was on fifty-two. Or actually, and now what they're doing is they're, they're taking the chunk off of sixty-four and putting that in there and, and taking the remainder and putting that with fifty-two.
Okay.
I, I think I'm making myself clear.
Yeah, no, okay.
Anybody have a question?
Nope.
Pretty straightforward.
So you got proper frontage on both, right?
Right.
Eighty-nine and ninety-seven.
Yeah, I put in a statement over there, I think I have the requirements for, uh, ten thousand, I think it's ten thousand there, so they, they make that. Total frontage on one was one oh five, and total on the other one was eighty-nine. I have that right right in there.
Okay.
Straightforward.
Usually I drive there, every time I pick up my daughter, that dance. Go straight here, turn around. It's a good practice to have the location plan. Maybe you ran out of space?
Yes.
Oh, the locusts.
I did.
Right, is that the locusts?
Yeah, I did. You mean the assessor's map?
Well, just a little map so we can tell where Warren is.
Yeah, where, I, I brought some along.
That's okay. I mean, not a big deal.
But I did, I did run out of space to put it on there.
Yeah, I can see that, you know. It's okay.
Next time.
You're coming back to see us?
No.
Well, they go back.
You're always welcome.
Wow, looks like move.
I'm gonna get out of the camera.
You can't.
Oh, my God.
It goes everywhere.
Who the hell wants to see what you look like?
Told you, that's why we sat back.
Every time we talk, the camera picks on us.
It goes right to you?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
So, you know, all right, I'll, I'll say something there, they're gonna pick me up.
Right here, I'm not gonna say it anymore.
All you gotta do is giggle.
Thanks. Well, forward, any questions? Move forward. Now vote?
Sure.
Have a, have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to endorse the A N R for Gail Swanzuski.
Eh, close enough.
Okay, and Mary Jane Adam, uh, fifty-two and sixty-four Chapel Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdick, aye.
David De Fray, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye. Derek Bellis, aye. Motion passes.
So let's.
Yeah.
Stop it now, let's just. Just leave that.
Thank you for any.
Yeah.
I can't please her.
No, I know.
Last time. Plus they once probably, uh, won a couple pieces.
Yeah, what are these movies? What are these for you?
So happy.
I'm still working on this. But later on, we can show on site.
That looks short and sweet. That looks short and sweet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the easy stuff.
See, he's just getting smaller every time we see him sign it. He's gonna put it.
Hold that, I assume.
Be a dot. I dotted the paper.
A little diagram, detail.
I think there's a standard.
Different cheese for, like, channel fans and, it's incredible, it's very, very detailed.
Thank you.
Well, look, and we talk alone, you go.
How long you been doing it?
Okay.
Forever.
All I ever did.
I started all the way from the first.
Yeah, sixty-eight.
Wow.
Wow.
I was in the fifth grade.
What?
I was in the fifth grade.
Oh.
I had two kids.
Well, took me a while, so I.
Uh, okay.
It was stupid back then.
Interesting thing, uh, but, well, you saw. Yeah, we did. But come on, you.
Oh, I know we were just in the DM.
Yes. As long as he makes more love.
Right?
Well, it's something.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I started doing this probably since nineteen sixty-nine.
It's been on the same pattern, Charlie?
And I go back now.
Since months?
Yeah.
Just a few seventy's in. And I have people working with that guy.
But I'm sure it's because we only use it for much.
I remember setting this pin right here.
Where?
Yeah.
You remember where you was setting it?
Yeah.
Right? Wow.
I know, it gets blown out.
That's.
That's like fifty years later.
And the pin lasts that long?
Yeah. Kind of protects them, except that, that one there.
Oh, the one with that.
Yeah, that, well, that was the. You know, when it broke. You can pick that.
Yeah, my dad. No, not probable. He's trying to get it out.
Oh.
Yeah. So great, there's a major snowstorm. It's the strongest thing that's coming out of nowhere.
That's a big area, really. Don't give that back. Mary Jane.
That's the most to the lawyers, or?
Yeah, look, he's only.
He's above my words?
No, only the. Just hold them on.
Okay.
See, this is a film. You got a film. This is what.
That's the one, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a first story.
Back in the day when they didn't have the stuff to put the PDFs and all together, this is what you needed to reproduce the band. Cause he put it through a die-asm machine. They make copies. But now it's more, but they still have each change of rules.
Everybody good?
I think we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
No problem. Have a good one. We are happy to see you here. The door is always open.
Those, I take them.
I think Gail used to sit in that desk right there.
I came from high school here.
You did?
Stairs.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I graduated in nineteen sixty-five.
Wow.
They're doing a map.
No more work.
Oh, happy birthday. It's my wife's birthday also.
Oh, boy.
Snacks, we have a meeting workshop to discuss special permit number three oh two for Samick Properties LLC, vote expected.
So Samick was the one with, uh, West Warren, Water District.
Right.
Yeah, right. Condition, right?
Right, we gave them the conditional. So. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Pretty much nothing we can say or do or.
I don't think we need to do anything else, right, except that?
The only one that was, um, against it was Ms. Charlene Ferris.
I think she was against the.
I missed that meeting.
I think she was against the activities that.
The noise.
That they used to have. And, uh, I asked her how, what can we do to help, but the planning board had no bite.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, we, we decide the use of the land, we, we tell them, you know, if it, if it's a McDonald's and they decide if they wanna sell hamburgers or chicken, we don't have control of that.
Right.
We just said, yeah, put it. Right, you know, and if there's more complications, I mean, the process is going through the building inspector or depending on the situation with the police or, or fire, but it's, it's out of this board, so it's nothing we can do.
Right.
All right, I see goodies here. So we want a motion to vote?
Sure. So I'll make a motion to approve the special permit number three oh two for Samick Properties, Properties LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdick, aye.
David De Fray, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye. Derek Bellis, aye. Motion passes.
I got that from David. He does that.
He does. It's a good thing to do.
Yeah, just in case they don't hear.
Yeah.
Meeting workshop to discuss special permit three oh three for Philip R. Langto.
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 Link, link.
Link.
Langto.
Langto.
Langto, okay.
Okay.
Not even in Spanish. What do we have over here? Same situation?
Yeah. You have the special conditions, right?
Hmm?
It was just straightforward, no special.
No special conditions, no. Again, you know, this is a new permit for an existing or former operational gravel pit.
You know, I, outside the project, I, I see all these little things like future opportunities. Cause they're already, already open nearby, you know, to get future things for the town. You know, so a business will come and look at a, oh, a nice open field.
Yeah.
Okay, so you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, ex, approve the special permit number three oh three for Philip R. Langto.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdick, aye.
David De Fray, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye. Derek Bellis, aye.
Hey, can I go before you do?
So we do like that.
Well, you're the chair.
You're the chairman, you're the last one.
Yeah.
Do I have to be the last one?
You wanna switch seats that would make it work better?
Just feels weird. The motion passed?
The motion passes? I was going directly to the next one. Thank you for the reminder. So six and seven, we're gonna have a table? Is that right, Joe?
Yeah, it's just if you wanted to discuss anything, you're available. If the decision is not written yet.
Do we need to discuss anything?
To, so. But. It's a standard permit, he just wants that gravel. Wasn't there a gravel or the?
There was one where he has his, um, the grindings.
Yeah.
Oh, the. Yeah, the amendment for the grindings that, um, with mass DOT, they occasionally can bring grinding, grindings down. They store them, they store them for a couple of days and then pick them up and leave. But that's when they're doing projects.
Were you in that meeting or was that, okay. All right, so you're all set with that, right?
Yeah, they gave us the wording of the, yeah, the language from the, um, original.
Okay.
You agree with that? It's always been that way. It hasn't been any issues.
Right, no complaints or anything?
Yeah, he hasn't had any issues with her or anything.
No, and he is.
And then he keeps it in a basin, he puts a basin around it, builds a basin, so.
He's really.
Or a berm.
He's really nice with town residents and in the past when we asked him to check it out, he's opened the door, left nothing.
Always been very responsible with this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay. So you're gonna work on that, on those two?
Yep, I've already worked almost done with one.
We move to the next one? By the way, that's a great place for a, uh, vertujes or apple leaves or something like that.
Where?
In, uh, the one next to the, uh, highway?
Oh.
I don't know, I'm just thinking.
You're thinking big, dude.
I'm thinking, I, I, you gotta think big because when the opportunity comes, you gotta be ready.
I, I want a Chick-fil-A somewhere.
Yeah.
You do, okay.
Oh, my God, that would be awesome.
Have you seen the lines of, my kids love Chick-fil-A, and every time we go there, it's like, big lines.
It's run around here, Springfield.
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 That's it. Who wants to go to Oyster?
I go all the time.
I, I do too, but, you know.
And I'm one of those people in that half hour line.
It's worth it though.
Yes, it is.
I, I love Chipotle, so the only condition I have is.
We can have one of those too.
We'll, we'll go to Chick-fil-A. So the kids say, yeah, okay, let's go.
Can have one of those too.
So a table at Oyster?
Well, six and seven. Six and seven are for next meeting, cause the paperwork is not done yet. Um, so the next one is Borrego Solar System Inc., Cronin Road Detention Basin Plan. Are they in here or?
They may be answering my question.
No.
I was looking here, but nobody's there. Well, three people are there.
So they have nothing?
But you had asked to put it on there, Jack.
Yeah, we just talked about, so Derek, myself, and Joyce went in November or early December? I don't even remember now.
I can check the date, but we went to the site, basically.
Right. So, um, there were what, four people from Borrego or three?
Three, I guess. Three from Borrego, yeah.
Um, so they cleaned out the big basin, um, and it looked better. Looked, it looked like it had drained and everything after, there had been some rain. They got rid of that small, kinda like swale basin thing that was further south of that big one.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so we said it looked fine. And, um, the one guy, maybe Tom? I don't remember. He said we could check again in the spring sometime, just cause par, partially it was frozen. So, there was a little bit of water, but, I mean.
Right, yeah, you sent the pictures here on November twenty-eighth.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So, in, in our opinion, Joyce was okay with it? You're okay with it, right?
I felt that they did a good job.
Okay. Yeah, so I think they corrected the issues.
They planted a lot of, uh, plants.
Put a lot of vegetation for the screening now?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it's starting to grow up a little bit.
And they, but they also plant the inside where you, we don't see them.
Oh, yeah.
Joyce was checking, I didn't know, but Joyce knew, and she checked every plant, like, oh, yeah, that's, yeah, she was happy with it. There's a video there, you can hear her talking about the plants at the end. Actually, three videos there.
Okay.
So I think we're good to sign off on the project then, right?
Yeah, I, I would recommend the board to sign off. There's nothing.
Fine, I mean, they did what we wanted, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, okay, well done.
And we still have the open door for, to check after that.
Of course, yeah. Of course. Okay. Cool.
All right, so I'll make a motion to sign off on Borrego Cronin Road Project.
Was it listed as possible vote?
No.
You can't vote.
Oh, okay.
It's just a discussion item, right?
I don't even know, do we need to vote?
Well, it's not a decision, it's not a.
Okay, all right.
I don't know. It's just they wanted the permit closed, right, is that?
The file, they want it to sign off on the file.
B J.
Yeah.
Sign off.
So we have to.
On the building permit, right?
Yeah, well.
Occupancy code.
Yeah, but it's a PJ.
Yeah.
Right.
There's a sign up from the planning board saying that we are okay with them.
Like we're happy with the project, right?
Yeah, they did what we asked them to.
So we're not actually voting on anything. If we're good.
We're just holding to sign up.
Yeah, it was just being held.
Okay.
Till, till those things resolve and if they're resolved.
We're good.
We'll forward.
Okay.
But we're not voting on a special permit or A and R or anything like that, so.
No.
Okay, cool.
All right.
So I can tell B J to go to the final vote, does she inspect it now?
Just tell her that we're all set with it.
You're all set, okay.
Yeah, and you can let Borrego know also.
Yeah, they corrected the screening of the basin, the only thing that was left was the basin.
Yeah.
There was the screening already, so.
The site is pretty stable.
And just when, when you email Borrego.
Hopefully it doesn't get fired.
Just say that we would like to go back and visit the basin one more time.
I don't know.
As, as promised.
It's been going on for a while.
And I can get the name of the guy too, I think Joyce.
Promised in November.
Yeah.
At November site visit.
So it'd be a visit in the spring, I mean, after everything is thought out, so April, May, something like that, after a rain.
Let's keep going.
You're up.
Okay, so after there was a fire at the solar project in Spencer for the fourth time, I said, hmm, maybe we don't know who owns all these properties of the solar properties, so we're sending out a letter tomorrow telling them, and I sent it to all of you and I talked.
Yeah.
The only other person I've talked to is I talked to Joyce and she suggested that we also ask them to include the person, company performing the operations and maintenance plan, which I did add to this.
Okay.
So that's gonna go out tomorrow and the plan is that when I'm back on the sixth or seventh, I will go visit Jill and we'll do another letter to anybody that hasn't replied.
Okay.
A second letter and on the fourteenth of February, all the people that did not answer will get a certified letter, the end.
Just for curiosity, what, where and what are these sections, twelve point one and twelve point five?
They're in the bylaws.
Can we attach them to them?
Solar bylaws.
Could you attach them to the letter?
Are you gonna email or mail?
We're mailing hard copies.
Both.
And we are asking for hard copies back.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Um. I can say described in section of the, of the town's solar bylaws and if they wanna read them, they can go read them, they're right there.
The website, yeah. But you know, including a copy of them, just kind of an in-your-face type of thing, here, this is where it says it. I don't know.
I can do that, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
So I would add in there, to make it more specific, which are found in the town warrants bylaw.
Right, solar bylaw.
And can be solar bylaw, it can be found on the Warren's, Warren Town's website, so, and you can give the website link if you want to, look, Warren Town website, you should be able to find it. Because in this way, if they turn around and say, well, where do we find it?
Yeah.
You just don't want any excuses with people.
Tell them everything up front.
Sometimes you gotta grab them by the hand and lead them to the water.
You want me to tell them what page it's on? Cause I can do that too.
I think you could hold back on that one.
Yeah, you know, no, but can you highlight the sections?
Yes, yes, I can do that.
Just give everything.
And it will have nice logo detail on top.
Yeah, right there.
Just print more pages.
And it will say, you will have to destruct in ten seconds if you don't reply.
Exactly.
Well, they'll be getting more mail from us.
Can you put it in twelve font Arial with, um.
Oh, no, you don't use.
That's a nice font.
Times, times, new row.
Times.
Twelve point times new row.
All right.
That's the standard case.
The envelopes are all addressed, I did that today, that's done.
All right.
I like that one.
Good.
And on a happy note, we found out Thursday at the Board of Selectmen meeting that all the pilots are up to date and paid from Kerry.
Really?
So, so what's, well, it's in litigation, so.
Except for.
We will expect that, but yeah, but everybody's been paying their pilots, so no delinquencies.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Oh. Good, surprising, but good.
Yeah.
Then they shouldn't have a problem answering this letter.
No.
No, nothing.
Cause you got that from tax collector, right?
I got it.
Or assessor.
I got it from the tax collector who got it from the assessor's office, because the assessor's office is closed.
Okay.
But she was able to get it from.
Yeah, but if they're mailing out bills to those addresses and getting payments, then that's good.
That works, cool, good. That's easy enough.
Thank you Drew for doing this and Jill.
No, no problem.
Should we pay Jill?
No.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
So we're gonna table that.
Oh, okay. I make a motion, we pay Jill in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents, two hundred and seventy dollars, two hundred and seventy dollars and two hundred and seventy dollars.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David DeFrey, aye. Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Boom, that's exciting.
I have a question. We threw everything off that time because.
That's just.
Drew couldn't even second one on that one.
Exciting, okay, let's do it again. I make a motion, we approve and sign the ten thirty-one twenty-two invoices for O'Reilly, Talbot and Okun in the amount of seven hundred and one dollar and seventy-five cents and four hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David DeFrey, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Cool.
Motion passes, no, it's not a motion, we favor.
I make a motion, we approve and sign the November seventh, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
That was absent.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Minutes.
I make a motion, we approve and sign the December twelfth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David DeFrey, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
I did give the twenty-first minutes, but that was just today, so it's not on here, we can table it or if you were able to look at them, that was that quick A and R.
I, I looked at it.
I thought it's done on.
Eric was in here for that one?
Yeah, David was, oh, Derek, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we approve the minutes of December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David DeFrey, aye.
Oh, you can't vote.
Richi Hacker, aye.
I'm within the.
Sorry. Okay.
Okay.
Cool.
Do we have any comments and concerns for the board?
I'm just curious, any legal updates, what's happened with Copart, anything?
No, nothing.
Nothing?
Yeah. Haven't heard who about anything.
Okay.
We're waiting on them, right?
Yeah, we're waiting on them.
Yeah.
They were gonna get back with some sort of a proposal or something and.
Yeah.
How about ZPT?
They've never, nothing on ZPT, Copart would have got back to us on the monitoring plan that we modified, nothing on that.
Now, is there a time restriction response? Because sometimes you give.
Yeah, I don't know.
So many, so many days for a reasonable response or?
Well, I think, I don't know.
Because you can't just sit there and say, well, you know, we're looking at it over in a year or two later, yeah, we're still looking at it over.
No, I think they would have gone before the judge and said, we need ninety days or a hundred and twenty days to like go to the next step.
Yeah, do we know what?
No, I don't know what.
All right. So you haven't heard from legal, so nothing's happened?
Yeah.
Good, they're not billing us.
The motion, the wheels of justice go slowly.
Yes, it does.
If you happen to do it with a dunk, like we do, when you get out, look straight forward, you can see it.
See what?
This project, that we're talking.
Yeah.
Up and heel.
Yeah. You guys.
I'm always looking around.
Well, I see you looking at your phone there and you get like, it's like negative thirty font of looking at. And you're reading it.
Not really. That's, I, I, that's what the zoom is for.
Zoom out.
Yeah, I, I do use glasses for reading, but it's just like one or one point twenty-five, so I can get at without it. But it's not a concern or comment. Any more concerns, comments?
No.
No.
Okay, public? Not at this time.
It's up to your attorney?
Yeah.
I do wanna say thank you very much, guys.
Yes, I mean.
It was very nice of you and, yeah.
Glad you're always here. Glad you're always here.
Yeah. And you're not here, we feel so alone.
We're lonely.
We worry about you, we're probably gonna send out a police detail to check on you next time, so.
We're in twenty-eight, twenty-seven. Boy, Donnie's gonna be surprised.
You know, we're gonna pick a date for the hearing for the next special permit?
Yeah, for six. Came in on the fifteenth of December.
And what was, oh, that's the medical thing, right?
No, uh, yeah, the.
Medical office or whatever?
Yeah.
Who was it, Keys Road, is that where it was?
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
Well, it came in on the twelfth?
Yes, December twelfth.
We're looking at February sixth.
Or should we just do the twenty-third?
Well, I need time to get it in the paper.
Oh, you too.
So.
Yeah, February, February sixth give you enough time?
Um, we're gonna be meeting on the sixth, we do one the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh.
So would the thirtieth give you enough time to get it all done or it's a little over a month, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm getting out these two, that two, so, it's just to put in the paper though and get.
We wanna make sure we give plenty of time.
Yeah, well.
Don't cut it close.
How about the twenty-seventh?
And that's within the.
Twenty-seventh?
The February, yep, so the. Wait a minute. They just, oh, that's coming.
Did you say Keys Road?
I think it's Kais.
K Y E S. Is it Kais or Keys?
I thought it was Keys Road.
It's Keys.